Like it's a surprise.
Yeah.
So I just focused on getting this technology working.
All four of you.
Of course, we don't really need to.
Right.
Just speed up the shift. Summer meeting here.
Alright. Well, here we go. We're good? Doug did something?
This one.
Good evening to Doug and Nick. Call the Mount Vernon Council Meeting to Order, the July 2, Mount Vernon Council Meeting to Order. Not aware of any changes that have been made to the agenda that we have in front of us. So, enter the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications. I assume we have none based off those respondents or not in attendance. Consent agenda, approval of council minutes, June 18, 2018. Approval of liquor license for C Senor.
And move approval of de consent agenda.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is resolutions for approval. Resolution 7-2-2018A, accepting work for the project known as the 2017 Sidewalk Improvements Project with JDM Concrete LLC. Chris?
Final contract price was $28,954.65. The work is complete. It's been inspected. We have less than a handful of individuals left in the Northwest Quadrant to kind of follow up on as far as not following through. Heather starts in August, so my hope is that we'll be able to do a lot of late work while finishing up the Northwest Quadrant and moving to the Northeast Quadrant for construction this spring, so. I haven't received any negative feedback from this contract other than in a few areas where they have to tear up some yard that needs to be replaced. Makes people take care of that, so.
Was it not the client people? Was it just because they're absentee landlords or something? Or they just don't want to spend any money?
Uh... I would...
I think there's some instances of that. I think there are a couple to see if we're really going to follow through this time.
But it's not very good?
No.
How does this basically 29,000 compare with estimates that we had? Do you know?
Pretty solid, actually, because we had the four quadrants. We earmarked $100,000, so it's a little high, but we knew northeast and northwest. And then southwest would probably be our biggest. So being 28,000 is too far off from, you know, the $25,000 number that we're shooting for. So, so far, so good.
And there's somebody who lives on the Northwest side that is nice to walk on. Nice sidewalks. For sure.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 7-2-2018A as presented.
My second.
Any comments? No comments, roll call, please.
Roberts?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright. Next item, Resolution 7-2-2018B, ordering construction of certain public improvements, approving preliminary plan and fixing date for here and there on and taking bids therefore for improvements on the First Great West Culvert Replacement Project.
After engineering staff met with Mr. Hoffman, he made a request that we delay the construction by two weeks because of the sweet corn business and the disruption. His driveway is fairly close to this, so we reached out to the school and asked if we did push this back two weeks. That would likely take us into the beginning of the school year. They didn't have any concerns. It might add a total of 10 minutes to the one bus route that it affects, so in an effort to oblige and not cause anybody heartache, we're just recommending moving this back, but moving the whole project back by two weeks. So, we were going to have a public hearing tonight. We would have had beds, so on and so forth, and maybe K issued an addendum to all of the contractors related by two weeks, which requires us to go through the process once again. Public hearing will begin at 16. Bids will be due by...
Anybody else have any other questions?
I do have Resolution 7-2-2018B.
My second.
Comments? No comments, roll call.
Chris?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Alright. Next item, motion for approval. I have on consideration a claims list. And if you notice, there's not a sheet front of us, everything that we have is what is needed.
And move approval of the claims list as presented.
I'll second that. Whoever.
Just got the top? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 2, discussion of consideration of skid loader purchase for Public Works. Chris or Nick?
Is this, I mean, we, budget is $35,000. We're getting $14,000 in the trade-in. So, our cost will be $32,000 for $23.72. What I talked about in my report, we'll talk about a little bit more come budget season is individual working for Bobcat has a proposal in which we would trade our skid loader annually if we use so many hours and so we're looking at the merits of whether or not we want to do that. It's to be out-of-pocket expense on a yearly basis, but if we can live within those parameters, we would be getting a new unit year in, year out. We certainly don't have to worry about depreciation, so on and so forth, so but that doesn't have to be decided. We're buying this piece of equipment outright and then during the budget talks, we'll elaborate on that.
Anybody have any questions for Nick?
Is this tracked or is this wheeled?
Wheeled, wheeled loader. Nope, we don't see a need yet for a track loader. Depending on other things happening, possibly like comp ups and stuff like that to where we'd be in the dirt more. They don't recommend a track loader on concrete and that's predominantly what we are. Set of tracks and fairly expensive, so.
Oh, what was that? Have we created an index around the hour?
It's 2008 and it has 30, roughly $3,500 on it, so it's probably beyond where we should be trading the unit in. So, the 2009 that we have has $2,400 hours. And I believe the 2008 was actually a used unit when we purchased it. They're both Bobcats, so we're trying to stay with... So, we don't have to switch attachments or anything like that, which most of these skid loaders now can all be interchangeable. We just have to request that when we go to John Deere or K's or any of those people. But it's the same unit that we have minus six horsepower. We're trying to stay away from having to add def fluid yet. We know it's coming for all the equipment eventually, but
What was that?
Def fluid in these diesel engines. It's an emissions thing. So, if you stay under a 74 horse engine or smaller, you do not have to add it. Currently, our engine's an 80 horse, so I guess we shouldn't be trading it in because it doesn't require def, but we've had quite a few issues with it, so it's just time to trade up.
Any other questions?
And move approval of the skid loader as presented.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Next item, discussion of consideration of pay estimate number 2, 2017 Sidewalk Improvements. Chris?
This pay estimate's for $1,835.40 and most of it is a repaintage. Whether it's the resolution person or anything, but there was a little bit of leftover work yet. They did this spring, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the change, basically the JDM Concrete for the project 2017, several projects 2017.
You got it, pardon me, the second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion of consideration of purchasing a Tremble R2 Subfoot Rover and Supporting Equipment.
So, this is to allow staff to basically GPS crucial infrastructure that we have in town without paying a contract with Midwest GIS or CHS Solutions. Again, with the hiring of Heather plus the Public Works Department and Alex and Wistwater Water, who would like to start GPS all of our crucial infrastructure, signs, handle covers, curb stops. This unit basically talks to a tablet that we would purchase through US Cellular and then once we GPS a point, we can turn that over to our CHS consultant. Save a lot of money by doing it internally versus having to come out and actually do time in the field, so. Overall, this unit is just under $7,000 with the tablet. I'm expecting this to pay somewhere in the neighborhood of $8. This will come out of operating budgets for all of the enterprise funds as they'll all use it, but very excited to get that website up and going and actually Heather's background is GIS. She works for a private GIS consultant in Colorado right now, so the timing could not be better.
So, do you, will you mount this on a truck? Or is this thing working?
No, it's a handheld unit, correct?
Yeah, it's a, we actually have the range pole, for lack of a better term. But it mounts on this pole with a point and then we're able to...
Oh, so like when you'll see them, like P O T guys?
A survey crew, yeah. They're similar to a survey crew. We're able to also take that unit to water main breaks and know it's actually now on a map where we had a break and what year and put that information in. I assume we do that.
Very nice.
Follow through with the test.
It feels to me like it's starting to use investment that we approved seven, eight years ago.
Yep.
So, I couldn't be more excited about that.
It's all timed together, by me.
So, what's the, just curious, what's the accuracy of this?
This one's actually, so there's two different models and we're looking for the one that has basically, I want to say within an inch.
Wow.
So...
That's great.
The model that was about half the cost that we didn't present to you because it had a two to three feet range. And again, if we're, like I said, if we were going to spend $3,000 on that, why do you not spend it and get within?
Yep.
Yeah, I think a three feet ladder is going to be big enough.
A little bit.
I don't want to dig, but I don't know about how your frequency is.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
In that case...
Go ahead.
Don't take it.
No.
In that case, I would move approval of the purchase of the Tremble R2 Subfoot Rover and Supporting Equipment.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? It's nice to see everybody fighting over the motion. Discussion of consideration of Lexington Pool Policy Management System for Police Department.
Thank you, counsel. I presented to you the proposal from Lexington Pool, a company that handles a lot of law enforcement, policy management and training and documentation across the country. And it's kind of making its way into Iowa. I've been hearing about it at the Chiefs Conference over the last couple of years. And I've been talking with different agencies. Lincoln County Sheriff's Department recently adopted it. North Liberty PD, a lot of the Johnson counties in our areas are using them. Our policies have been, there's a good mix in there, so it's definitely a struggle for a department our size to stay current with policies and procedures. Keep those up to date with the ever-changing court decisions that come down and how they impact policies and everything else. This platform will allow me to send in our current policies. They will go through our current policies, make recommendations on how to update them or what their recommendations are, bringing them current or maybe resend them completely and putting something else in place if those are there. And then they send it back to me for approval and review. We can have our city attorney, if there's, depending on which policies they are, you could have use of force reviewed, different things like that. And then send back the final draft. They will develop a training on that specific policy for the officers and they all have to sign in. Then they will receive the policy. They'll receive training on the policy. And they'll have to take a test to demonstrate knowledge and understanding of the policy. And it's all documented in a software program. So, I'm ecstatic about that aspect of it and just the management and the training and documentation from there to make sure we're current.
And how does it work with the updates? As new updates come in?
If there's, I sent one out today for review. He's got one in the notice today of a Supreme Court decision in Iowa. So, this Lexington, this Lexington originated out of California. So, they've got, they're keeping an eye on the United States Supreme Court and their decisions on how it impacts law enforcement. But this one is specifically with Iowa, and so they're also watching those state courts. So, they have their reps that are monitoring court decisions and bringing those in. And then they'll make, so they'll send us notice, hey, there's a recent Supreme Court decision in this case. Here's the parameters of that case. Here's how it could impact this policy or this policy. And so, these are the changes that we would recommend. We would review those again, send it back and I can just, you know, click a button and say accept or modify with these changes to make sure that it meets our local impact of what we want for policing standard here. And then it goes through that same process again, goes back to the officers for revisit. Very, seems to be very efficient. Everybody I've talked to, very supportive of it.
And so, committing to this would be roughly $5,000 a year recurring operational cost for the department?
Correct.
I assume we have room in the budget, please?
We do, definitely for, you know, I, I can definitely get it through this budget and then we can look at it again at budget time for the ongoing expenses. I just, as I've talked with Chris, my big thing is risk management, as with Chris. I think it's, it's one of those things that probably needs to get done sooner than later. I am, I'm comfortable with this year's knowing that there's not any major projects from that standpoint, from where we're at right now, that we can probably absorb it.
Is this replacing a consistent review by our city attorney around such things?
No. So, the, whatever policies, the policies that we've had in place and that we've been reviewing, some of them are well outdated. Some of them are more recently updated. I just implemented one last week, trying to go through the ones that we have. The ones that require a lot of research, use of force, policy changes, different things like that, I could, I could spend weeks gathering the research, going through that. And still, you're still going to miss some of the teeth that come through that. And so, I think that's where the value of this, because you've got attorneys that are developing the policy already with that service that comes with it. Whatever policies, you know, the more critical policies that we have can still be reviewed by the city attorney from that process. We'll get the draft version and so we can determine which policies, there wouldn't be necessarily a need for, you know, like different less impacting ones, maybe like a vacation policy or something like that that wouldn't be as impacting. But obviously, the ones like use of force, search and seizure, different things like that, we would definitely want to review probably.
It's a similar program to what we currently do with our overall COVID application evenly. That's city code and it prevents us from having to do this every five to six years. What we can do before this next budget season, before we actually have to renew Lexington's contract would be to see what the city attorney would do. So, currently, the city attorney does not update anything unless directed to by staff or council, so they're not actively engaging our policies unless we send it to them for their review.
I think it's from a risk management standpoint, it just easily is worth the $4,000 or $5,000 on an annual basis.
And one thing I've done too is looked at the International Association of Chiefs of Police. They have model policies out there. The ones they have in place right now that we can download and copy and paste type of a thing are 2000s area, so they're, they're getting a little data as well. There are some through ICAP, our Community Insurance Pool, which would be our insurance carrier, basically. They've got, but some of those are getting out. And they're actually working with Lexington right now to try to determine. There may be in the future, it may be a price break or something like that. I've been kind of holding off on this recommendation for the past six months, kind of waiting to see where they were going to come with that between their discussions with Lexington and ICAP. And it didn't sound like it was going anywhere at this point, so I didn't like it. I felt something to break forward with you guys.
When, when will this start, Doug?
I can, we can get it implemented pretty much anytime. It'll be an ongoing process at first, so I will send them all of ours and then they'll start picking out and reviewing those and make the recommendations. The Sheriff's Department's been on it for about a year. They are not fully implemented yet, so it's kind of a lengthy process to go through, which is where I get, the problem I've been struggling with trying to keep up to date with the ones we have is I can work on it when there's not other things going on. But even the research ability of Lexington and what that's going to bring is going to be far beyond what anything I can do here.
Will this require any infrastructure upgrades for us or is this just a standard? Get on the website?
Get on the website, absolutely. No structure changes for us.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions?
Thanks, Steve.
Everybody's fighting at once now.
Well, I do have a question.
Okay.
You mentioned that with the Sheriff's Department, you know, the process is taking, pushing a year or over a year. Now, if we get into the position of having to make a decision to renew this, it would be nice to be through the process and to push it a little bit so that we can have a full cycle before we have to make that budget decision.
I think ours will move faster because we're more of, we're a small department.
Right.
We also don't have the jail and the civil division and everything else, so they're going to have a lot other policies to go through. How many they knock out through ours, most of them are blanket. They're pretty standard. There's a handful, probably 20 or so, that are more of your critical, like I mentioned before, search and seizure related, they're constitutional related, that they're going to take a deep dive. But they've already done the research on that, so it's really mostly probably reviewing on staff's perspective with attorney input on how does that look for Mount Vernon? And making sure that it's just not a national standard, it's kind of a blanket policy, but really personalizing it for our department to make it work here.
And I said those will be the ones they would do first, right?
Yes.
We should have a decent benchmark by the time we start talking about it, budget time, whether or not we're satisfied or first department is satisfied with policies that they're seeing because we can start with the most important first. Obviously, if we're not getting any of those policies back in the six period between now and when we really get into the meat of the budget, then that should probably tell us something about whether or not their services are warranted in the future.
North Liberties is, they're very, I don't know how long it took to get theirs implemented. I can definitely follow up with them, but they're pretty pleased with theirs. Working on the canine policy that's going to be coming up as well. I pulled it, actually pulled North Liberties and kind of built ours off from that standpoint. So, that should already, for the most part, coincide with what their recommendations would be too. So, we will definitely be diligent working through that process.
How negative is that? Would think that once they went through the first year's cycle, got the benchmark policy set, that the rate would go down a few years worth of just reviewing. But still, a $5,000 investment in public safety is a good investment, but I just think from a marketing point of view that they would, they're not putting that much, I'm assuming not putting that much effort into it, once they've gone through a review cycle.
Being a small, small department, I've asked that question as well. You're paying for the service as well, that the ongoing continuing monitoring. I can give them, we'll give you the spiel. But there is, I mean, that's a huge value. Like I said, today was out of nowhere, we get an Iowa Supreme Court decision that was, that will impact one of our policies that we'll be reviewing in the next, and I'll be taking a look at that this week and seeing how it's going to impact and go through from there. So, getting that professional quick response and stuff like that. They're, they're monitoring the courts, both, like I said, at the Supreme Court level of the United States and the Supreme Court of Iowa, monitoring what decisions come out of that. So, there is a little bit of a service in. We do, we will have the option, it's a year-to-year contract. In theory, I could get the whole policy in place and say, you know what, we're good. We're going to cancel your service and maybe contract again in five years. But we lose that continuity that comes through there. So, we can review that and see, like I said, next year at this time, we can definitely monitor and see where we're at.
Thanks, Doug.
Having said it from the motion here, I would move to approve the going on with Lexington to do our policy updates and whenever that can be started.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Nice tight motion there.
He knew that he was next to her. Working that up.
Next item, discussion of consideration of associate planner position. This is cited for this one, so.
Just kind of an FYI, like I said. Heather Flynn has received a tentative offer for her current GIS position. She actually works from Iowa, based out of Colorado, but she has a security clearance for that, so I'm assuming military applications, which is great because we're not concerned about her passing our background check. References have all checked out thus far. Nothing crazy comes up for Google, so happy to say that she should be on board in August. She does, like I said, bring in an extensive background in GIS. That's currently what she's been working with. Lives in Iowa City. Will be a commuter as her husband is a physician at the U of I Hospital, I believe, so. Excited to have her on board. Matt's not here, but he wishes it was sooner than August 6. Excited to...
I'm not going, I'm not going to on the line.
Yep, real quick. Anybody have any questions, although if you don't need a motion or anything?
No. Thanks for sharing.
Alright, next item is water sewer bill reduction ordinance.
So, at a previous council meeting, I presented a number of different ordinances, resolutions that had been passed by other communities. And I kind of focused in on Charles City. At that meeting, we decided to tailor Charles City ordinance that might fit Mount Vernon. They have different tiers, things like that, so their ordinance was two pages long versus ours. But the gist of this is it has to be a mechanical failure. They have to report that mechanical failure within 14 days of when it actually happens. We can see that from the news when it's going to happen by reading the bills. The adjustment would be triggered if their usage was 150% of their rolling 12-month average. Now, having a conversation with my staff, this is probably where it gets a little unfair, so if you move in, you know, and then there a month, you know, if there's a previous family of five and you're a family of two, it's not going to work out. But the only way to truly gauge a billing cycle is over a 12-month grade. So, there is going to be, I don't want to say discrepancy, but there will be potential issues with that, so keep that in mind.
Is that something that we could address potentially during the fill process? If they came to us and said, listen, we've only lived in the house for three months?
It's...
You know, what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think it's possible. You just have to be careful once you get
Yeah.
and establish ordinance in there to deviate. Would probably require some amending, but we can, we can write in or I can have the attorney write something in that would allow some flexibility if that's something of interest.
No, I don't, I don't know that it's necessarily, I'm just thinking of those one-off situations where you do have that requirement.
And I don't foresee it happening. It might add a month in a five-year period where that actually occurs, but. Otherwise, like I said, I don't foresee it happening. It's just, the 12-month average gives us a nice period of time to look at, say, this is the average usage at this place. 25% reduction in both sewer and water, still a fairly significant reduction. More so than other communities that I've seen. There's still a lot of communities out there that say if you use it or it went through your meter, then you're paying for it, so. And it does currently go to the administrator with an appeal to the council. I personally wasn't crazy about it being my decision, but as long as they have the ability to appeal to the city council, then I'm comfortable with that. So this is the gist, I just wanted to get it in front of you to see what your comments would be, if this is something that you still had interest in reporting. Coincidentally, we've been holding Mert Bowers' large water bill till this is decided one week or the other, so.
I have one small observation, and that is that it says the discount will be applied to the customer's next monthly bill. If you apply this to the Bowers situation, 25% of, I don't know what it is, $2,000?
They had two months, it rolled over a two-month period, so I think it was like a thousand and a thousand.
Okay, so, so they probably exceeded 100%, or 25% of this, 250, and I'm, it's quite possible their monthly bills wouldn't be $250. So if the, if the credit can't be used within one month, right, then, in other words, perhaps the last sentence could be rephrased such that, towards future billing, rather than their next monthly bill? And in that way, it would ensure they can use up all their credits.
And on that same note, and again, this is one of those, you know, one-in-a-thousand kind of deals, but if they're, if it's their final bill, if they're moving, you know, now, we don't, and again, most likely not going to happen, but I'd rather us not put some future council under a jackpot for them. So is there some way to write in some option? I mean, does it, what's the thinking of putting it on their next bill as opposed to just crediting that current one?
You mean writing them a check?
Well, or subtracting. Subtracting, right, like in the Bowers situation, we haven't, right, so we haven't had them pay that yet.
That's what I was.
So instead of saying, okay, you have a thousand on this month and a thousand on that month, we reduce both of those by a quarter. So now it's 750 on each of those.
I'd rather than asking them to pay that full now.
I think it could be the assumption is that you don't want their bill past due.
Right, and that was the other question that I had, is if there's nowhere in here, it was, and I had a note, and I should have made it more clear as to why I put that note in there, but, do they need to pay it regardless of where in the process they are? If by the due date or other dominoes start to fall as far as service interruption? Or, because there didn't seem to be any mechanism for that as, for that either.
No, internally, we can hold, similarly to Bowers, we can hold on to that. We can even internally give them a year to make payments, so do a payment arrangement. We're not required by gas and electric to offer that because it's water. However, we tend to on these rather large bid bills to spread that out. The only thing that I would want to avoid from a staff level is give them anything other than credit on their existing bills or however we report. I would not want to cut them a check because then I think we run into a situation where we probably won't see some of the payment.
No, no, I, yeah, I don't, I don't want to do that either. I'm just thinking, why, if we're, if we, again, taking them to Bowers or even another situation where we say, just sit on it while we go through this process, and either you or it comes to us and we then grant the reduction, couldn't we just say, okay, you haven't paid this one yet? So here we're knocking 25% off on that one, and instead of applying credit to the next one.
Yeah, we can, because this, everything's a month behind, so we're just going to credit their account regardless. So if they have a past due balance, it's still, I mean, it's still on the computer program regardless. The nice part about this is if I make a decision and they don't have to necessarily appeal it, then this process can take, you know, less than 24 hours to go through my office. Could take a couple of weeks if they appeal to the council. However, we should never be, an application should never take more than a couple of weeks unless it's something that gets tabled at council. So there are circumstances where, I guess, you could, but for the most part, they'll be within the next billing cycle and we would just credit back their account.
Yeah, then they just, it's a credit to their account, you don't need to be more specific, right?
Yeah, right. And then, for instance, in the Bowers scenario, if it's 250, 250, then we can say, you're still going to be on loan for $750 for these two months. We will make a 12-month payment arrangement for that portion of it.
So then do we have internal mechanisms to add? If you, let's say you do come to that agreement, then do we have internal mechanisms to say, okay, so that 750 over 12 months is 120 bucks a month or whatever it comes to? Do we have the ability to add that to each bill? Or is that a, somebody in the office and they have to remember that that's supposed to happen?
Meredith is going to have to have a sheet of, and we will anyway, I mean, if we do that now, if somebody has a, if there's a very large bill, we'll allow a payment option today, so it's just something that.
So it's not, it's just adding one more to the, this is already going on.
Adding another duty, but again, I don't foresee this happening a lot. But toilets fail, water heaters fail, water lines fail, so I mean, there are scenarios obviously where this happens. This would be the most fair method that I can probably recommend to the council, and it does give some relief without giving it a total credit. And that's where I think we would run into trouble, and that's kind of the conversation that we go back and forth, is they do use the water. We are treating whatever goes through the system, because it always ends up in the sewer, so. In that regard, they would get a break, but they're not going to get a full break.
So do we need to have language added to things on sort of the whole process during the review and appeal? And obviously, from the point at which they get that fixed, we'd want them to, even if we're still pursuing the decision on month A, that they still pay for months B, C, D, you know what I'm saying? We want to have them to be current otherwise. And I feel like there needs to be some sort of language in there on that. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't have language on the payment arrangement? Because that's something that you're doing so that they know as part of the ordinance that that is an option.
Do we have the existing policy that's supposed to?
Not, really, not, I don't know, written policy, it's just something internally that we.
Past practice?
Yeah. I mean, we have means in which to, collection agencies income offset. I mean, there, we have ways of collecting the funds, should we not, and it takes a lot longer than what we would prefer, but. Yeah, I can have the attorney have that information there at those two statements.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Have those strong feelings on this, other than getting closure?
Yeah.
And I would just provide everybody enough, if you have any other questions or ideas pop up, my personal.
Well, and on a related note, are we, and this is probably just my lack of solid memory, but, are we moving any closer on not having monthly delayed billing?
No. So.
Didn't we look at a system at one point? I mean, is that part of my memory serving incorrectly, and it was going to be?
It still would, the billing cycle would still likely be a month behind. What we were looking at moving to was a fully automated system that we can either read through the vehicle or from the water tower, the cost of which, which we're exploring this year is still substantial. So the question that we have right now is, can we work with one of the existing water meter companies? I have a staff of two, so the realistic aspect of them putting your change in out 1,200 meters is probably not going to happen. So there, there's four major companies that we're kind of reviewing right now. And the goal was to review that as we move through this fiscal year in preparation for next fiscal year's budget. I still question or am apprehensive about the fact that we have a bond for the water plant that we're still paying on, so. Whether or not we'll be in a position to make that, I still can't tell you, but we are going to go through that process.
But the net benefit was you would catch such leaks earlier.
Yes, and their sales pitch is you make up some of their costs by up-to-date meters, catching those leaks. You could, depending on how often you read them, and realistically, you could read the entire community in less than two hours, driving around to various points. We could go all the way and put an antenna on our water tower and have it ping frequently. There would still be some delay, like I said, if we read them weekly, we'd still have to internally in the office go back in and compare. Some of the systems that they offer do provide you an alert when.
When it's outside of some current.
Yep. So their options, it just depends on how much we want to pay for them.
This is always a risk.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for that, I just couldn't remember that, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Nice job, we need to start somewhere.
As named.
We'll, have the attorney kind of make some of those changes and then we'll start the process. We have three readings, obviously, that continue to tweak this as we move forward, so.
Good start. All right, next item, reports. Obviously, we have two busy weekends coming up, so a lot of work. You know, Nick and his team and Joe and everybody else involved in them with 4th of July and Heritage Days. Anything from council committee reports, anybody?
I'm just curious to know if anyone used the facility on the weekend based on the temperatures?
Not, I did not see anybody, not, we've seen up here.
What their mechanism for letting people know about that, other than those emails?
Your Lynn County EMA sends out an alert, so it goes to various offices around Lynn County. It just lets them know that they have these available, the law enforcement has them available.
Website, Twitter?
Believe it or not, Twitter and website, I mean, we've had people ask whether or not it's going to be open, whether or not they take advantage of it, but we've had individuals call and ask, but.
Is that something we could put, and I, maybe we've put it in there and I just haven't seen it, but in the newsletter, like, in the spring or summer, as we know, the temperatures are coming, just a reminder, check X, Y, and Z resources if, you know, whatever, just another. Because I think it's a great service and something that is important to do, but I just don't know how many people, you know, are there on Facebook or Twitter. Does it have to hit a certain, what's the, so to speak, to trigger it?
It's actually up to us, so on the last three occasions, Doug and I basically talk and decide whether or not we think it's going to be hot enough. We tend to just talk about humidity and then temperatures and it really, as long as there's, this room isn't being rented, there's no reason not to. We always have an officer here, so it's, anytime that we're getting it to 85 or 100% humidity and it's upper 80s, it's there.
It's sustained.
It's whatever, a day. My, uh, diesel fire heroes over there taking that, so.
You're doing, you're going to be surprised.
All right, next item, city administrator report, Chris?
Just real quick, city hall's closed on the 4th, government services delayed by a day. The ceremonial groundbreaking will take, for both the school and the city, will take place on Saturday, July 14th. Tom is going to speak along with the Burris family. Quick update, they're poised to reach their $2 million fundraising goal, maybe yet this week, if not surpass it. So I couldn't be more excited about that group and what they've accomplished since, since February, maybe.
How much is left of the manometer match, do you know?
There's potent, so I think the manometer match right now, he sits at about $200,000 that he would match. There is potential, depending on Dave, because it doesn't necessarily match everything. So I have to ask him specifically about certain things. So I have some alumni from Mount Vernon that are going to donate, but they'll live here, so I have to specifically ask Dave if he'll match those. Sometimes he does, sometimes he won't. But his match right now is like two, and like I said, I want to say, I received $7,000 in checks this morning when I walked through the door and other people have brought them in. Another $10,000 pledge from the weekend on Sunday, so there was only a $50,000 gap in between that $2 million mark and where they're at. So I had, if they're not within a few, couple thousand, I'll be amazed.
And it's amazing, when you consider the short window of time that they've had to work.
Hopefully they'll run though.
You're at a million dollars for Burris, you're at half a million for Hall Green, and 200 and 200, that's 100, that's 1.9 million, so.
Yes, but there are, there, that is what Dave, manometer will match, there are other monies that he will not match. So for instance, United Fires gave him $25,000, he will not match that $25,000, so. Those are other dollars, and that's where they're, where I'm saying they're closer to the $2 million mark.
Fantastic work.
When is our next discussion on this? I have some concerns that I haven't discussed on this, so I was just wanting to know when the next.
So at the, the next go-around, we'll be, we have two options to discuss, one, will we actually borrow our funding? The second will be when it comes time to actually let the, the final project, so. They, next week, I believe, we should find out, they go through a, this will be their second round of construction modeling, so Second Hurson Out of Hames, a private group that does construction estimating outside of the architects. This will be their second round of looking at their numbers. We'll find those numbers next week, and so we're fairly close to bringing a finished product to the council budget. For the most part, all of the uses in the building have been established, the square footages have been established. The exterior, for the most part, has been established, so.
Yeah, I'm just, like I said, there's, have we come up with a budget anything as far as what's going, what is it going to cost to run the facility? What is it going to cost to maintain the facility? I'd like to see those numbers, or at least an estimate on those numbers and how we're going to pay for it. Because the reason why I bring this up is because several weeks ago, when the K-9 unit came up, morning brought up that we should have a resolution that no fund shall fund the K-9 unit except for what they have. And I'd like to see the same thing for this community center, because I just believe it's going to suck funds from sources that it shouldn't suck funds from. It should only take funds from lost memberships, rental space, and any donations, and it shouldn't get money from anywhere else. And if they can't do that, well, then there's a problem. If we do that, the K-9 unit, which the whole city can use, for the community. center, you have to have a membership. So I really think we should get a resolution that states we're not gonna fund anymore from anywhere else, because I, I think it's gonna bleed us. And the reason why it concerns me is we only got two hundred thousand dollars from citizens of the city, and that's kind of sad, when you consider that's only roughly fifty, fifty-four dollars per citizen over two years for two hundred thousand dollars. That's pretty, that's, that, that doesn't show commitment to me. You're getting big ones, which I, you know, the Burris family, that's wonderful, that's one. And Paul Crane, really, they don't have a dog in the game, they're not, they don't live here, that's wonderful too, but from the individuals, if you're only getting two hundred thousand dollars, that makes me wonder if they got their, if their dogs in this game or not.
Well, yeah, given that those, there was a commitment to spend the lost funds, to dedicate the lost funds and vote.
Yeah, but again, I brought this, I brought this up so many times, and everybody poo-poo whenever I say it. It never stood by itself. It was always with something else. When they voted on lost money, it was streets, it was the paths, and it was downtown, and it was the community center. Never did it once go up for a vote, community center. Never, ever. So that tells me, and, and this is based on community center, two hundred thousand dollars. To get a half a million, you'd have each individual a hundred and fifty dollars over two years. That's, that's nothing. My, my church, uh, Antioch Christian Church put a five million dollar addition on it, a church, four years ago. Thousand members committed five million over two years, that's five thousand dollars per member. That's commitment. Hundred and fifty bucks, you think you can get that, but we're not giving it, and that's what concerns me about they're not gonna get the funds to run this on an annual basis. It's gonna bleed the city of forty, fifty, sixty, eighty thousand a year.
If I can, just answer some of your questions. Um, we did estimate, uh, in the grant application, we estimated annual cost for moving, receiving memberships. Um, I can't guarantee that it won't be the unit funding, and I've said that from the very start. And the reason for that is, and the reason that I brought to you the community center in the way that I did is to save as much of the sales tax funding for cost overruns as humanly possible on an annual basis, so. Um, as I told you before, I brought to you a project that, as comfortable as I can feel in the, under the guise in which it was voted on, um, is what I can do for you.
Like I said, it just seems that, you know, if you, if you're gonna do it for one program, do it for another. Where is the difference here? And that K-9 unit serves the community, community service.
Yeah.
There's no resolution in there, so. That's what concerns me a lot. Like I said, if this was half a million dollars, I'd be thinking, huh, you know, they, they hit their mark, you got the, the five hundred thousand, I'd be, I'd be fairly, but two hundred. It didn't even make fifty percent of that.
The only thing I would say, though, as far as whether or not we're voting on this. As a council, you have the right to stop at any point before the, the building actually gets constructed. I will say that you've already spent a significant amount of money and had about four or five different series of votes, at which points we could have stopped. So even though this is a ceremonial groundbreaking, we've reached the fundraising goals, we've established the funding for the, the facility, so. We've also collected a lot of money in the, in around the country. So when, when I came to you and said we have, we've received a million dollar gift, and this is the facility that we're talking about, when I asked that now's the time to, to say, continue to go forward or not? My, my only point would be that. Legally, yes, you could stop at any point if you like.
Again, I don't only want an individual. I mean, there's four other people on this bench, which I know they're all in on it, but I just wanted to let people know that this is gonna bleed money out of this, out of our regular funds, and I'd like to know where that money's gonna come from, because it's gonna do it. It's, I'm a hundred percent sure it's gonna bleed money out of the regular funds.
If it bleeds money more than seventy-five thousand dollars on the sales tax than we have.
But again, that's lost money. That's what I'm stating here. That's, that's committed. If it's, if that money's there, well, then, that's committed. What I'm saying is if it exceeds any of those funds that I said, we should have a resolution saying, hey, something's gotta be done here. We either need donations and fund drive or something, but we shouldn't take it from that. Yeah, I, it's committed, the funds are committed to loss. I understand that. I just don't want it to.
I think the same thing with the swimming pool currently. I mean, that, you know, you, if you, that's the, if the, if the criteria is no, uh, what's the word, discretionary city expenditures should not pay for themselves, right, in terms of the fees collected, then we should just close down the swimming pool up in the, or up at Davis Park.
And the Parks and Rec.
Yeah, most of Parks and Rec, just shut it down. Doesn't pay for itself.
And the police department.
Yeah, but those, again, those, those don't count. Parks, anybody can use them at any time. That, that, if you're a poor person, you can't say, oh, I, I, you can't go to the park. If you, if you can't afford the membership in this community center, you can't come to this community center.
That's not, that's not the case.
Well, not to use the equipments and stuff like that.
That's not the case, because they're talking about.
They're talking about, well.
I have a suggestion to say, otherwise, I'm not.
Four points here. I, too, definitely want this to be budget neutral and operational and down the road. I am, I guess I was a little more optimistic. I, I was blown away by the level of donations that came up in an increasing, in a very, very short period of time, I thought.
Especially when you consider the school.
Plus with the competition. Catholic Church got a fundraising, uh, capital campaign, uh, the school district put together one that was even faster, quicker than ours. So in that timeframe, I was very impressed with the amount of contributions. And the reality is that Dave and Meter committed his half million dollars in December of twenty sixteen, and later on, he changed the parameters that, he wanted the local match. We're not gonna say that, you know, we don't want the local, we don't want his money because we haven't, he changed the parameters. I mean, he started out with a, a gift of a half a million, a half a million dollars, but then that changed, but because, I'm gonna take what we can.
He wanted to gauge what the community.
Or, or, he's the door, he's, 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 he's before, I said, very wise of it.
It is wise, because he wanted to see how committed his community was to it.
Sorry, is there anything else, otherwise?
I, I just have one question. Do we have to bring arrows, break man shovels on the fourteenth, or will those be provided?
We'll provide them. I will not be there, however, I will be in the.
That was supposed to make people laugh.
I will also be.
The hard hat.
Ooh.
Uh, not for this one. So this is, again, this is the ceremonial, because of the school's, uh, building project, this is a ceremonial. Obviously, the construction won't start until October, so after the contractor's chosen, we will have an actual groundbreaking on our facility.
And that one won't be ceremonial?
No.
We'll actually be digging the hole where the.
Okay.
More part of our contribution.
It's where you get the real job.
The only other thing I had is I have the ice that they offered in Des Moines next Wednesday through Friday, so the packet will be extremely condensed and probably small because I have to have it done by Tuesday next week.
Good, anybody else? Any else? Not further business, being sent here? You got a lot for me?